Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call our special council meeting for February 26, 2009 to order. First thing we need to do is determination of a quorum, if you would, Amber.
Quaker?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Broger?
Here.
Costello?
Here.
Hadcock?
Here.
LaCroy?
Here.
Martinson?
Here.
Wythenbach?
Here.
Ocrepke?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. As always on the special council meeting, just so you know, we have two items on the agenda. One is the first reading of ordinance 5479. The second one is approval of resolution establishing fees. Per state statute, we cannot add any additional items to the agenda, so we do need to restrict that to the two items on the agenda. Let's see. I'm going to turn to Alderman, Sam Quaker. If you just read the first one in, I think this is probably, yep, you just read the first one. And if I may, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and read this in. We'll get a motion on the floor so we can actually discuss it. Then we'll have a presentation. We will open it up to discussion, and then we will close the public hearing, and then we'll have some debate up here. So everyone will have the opportunity after the presentation.
Item number one is first reading of ordinance 5479. In ordinance implementing the recommendations of the Downtown Revitalization Task Force and Downtown Parking Committee by adopting parking regulations for certain areas of Rapid City by admitting chapter 10.44 of the Rapid City Municipal Code for the purpose of discussion, I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for discussion. Okay. First thing is unless there's an objection by anyone on the council, what we'll do is we'll have a short presentation. After the presentation, then we will open up for public comment, and then we will close public comment, and then we'll have discussion among the council members. So with that, Monica, are you giving the presentation, or is John Brewer?
John Brewer.
Okay, very good.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. And I may be talking, but if Monica leaves my side, we'll have an equipment breakdown immediately, so she'll hopefully join me here at the podium. I have a short statement to just bring to you prior to the PowerPoint presentation, and that begins with a thank you to the council. You've worked hard on this process, not only through the task force, but through the committee work and the meetings that it's taken in this community to bring this plan forward. The City Center Revitalization Task Force, which is chaired by Alderman Karen Gunderson Olson, and served by President of the Council Deb Hadcock, and Alderman Bill Ocrepke, and I believe, is there another council person on that task force? At any rate, I want to point out, thank you for the time you spent on that. You know that a lot of time in that two and a half year discussion revolved around the parking. Community citizens, downtown property owners, and business owners alike have made all of these meetings, we're going to point out to you, and they've offered written and oral comment over a long series of public meetings. And finally, at the last special council meeting on parking, it was referred to legal and finance to create a citizens review committee, which met three times, and we'll talk about that. My name is John Brewer, and I was on the City Center Task Force, and I chaired the Citizens Parking Plan Review Committee from the last special council meeting. I'm here today with Monica to present to you the particulars of that process that the community in full has worked on, and how that got us here tonight. Before we present the PowerPoints, I want to say that the Chair, as Chair of the Downtown Review Committee, as an employee downtown, and as an employer downtown, and if we have any more of these meetings as a resident downtown, we have worked very hard to bring forward the proposed ordinance that serves the various stakeholders downtown. And this was part of the discussion that came in over the last couple of meetings. There are stakeholders. There's property owners, there are employees, there are residents, there's business owners, and then there are visitors. We call them customers. Through a lengthy series of meetings, open houses, public meetings, and special council meetings, we've brought forward a plan that maximizes, to the extent possible, the consensus reached in public hearings and committees, the consensus for downtown parking. That was reached through an examination of public comment and public testimony. The plan serves all stakeholder groups, not the same, which does not mean that it's not fair. It means that after significant hard work by many good people in this community, we bring to you today our best and fairest plan possible. The community has done its work, and has an expectation the council will act on this plan. The purpose of this plan is clearly set out in section 10.44-150. I believe you have that on your computers. The reality and the perception that parking needs to be fixed downtown has been the subject of ongoing conversations since 1949. And as President of the Economic Development Efforts Downtown, I can assure you that parking is the number one reason new businesses of the destination type, existing businesses, consider any other location in the city if they think that we're not going to solve their parking problems, and they don't consider the current plan a solution. This plan is a huge step in turning that around. Finally, the citizens of the review committee met three times to review everything that was part of the plan, part of the discussion, and part of the public input. We made changes based on community input. We made some changes because of committee input, and I believe we strengthened the plan and made it better for the stakeholders. Our reviews of the economics that were presented in the PowerPoint clearly established this plan will provide the funds for future parking solutions, which was the goal of all of the work that we did. Again, my thanks to all that have worked hard to bring this presentation today, and to you for hosting all of these meetings. First slide, thank you, Monica. Discussion actually started, as we found out, in 1949, the Rapid City Plan identified a deficiency of off-street parking in the central business district. The 1991 Downtown Master Plan, which is still the city's master plan, this document, and this plan, fairly consistent with the document that was created in 1990, increased the number of spaces in the highest use areas, and improved management of all spaces were the findings of that plan. In 2007, the Parking Committee, as part of the Mayor's Downtown Revitalization Task Force, began to develop a Downtown Parking Plan. An open house was held June 24, 2008, and it was very well attended. The Downtown Parking Plan was approved by the City Center Revitalization Task Force on June 27. And I might just take a minute to let you know that when it first came out and was presented to the task force, and the task force, by the way, consisted of somewhere around 40 community members, downtown people, people that are on the council, and interested parties in Rapid City. And so it got a good look by, I think, all of the stakeholder groups. The Downtown Parking Plan was presented to the Legal and Finance Committee on July 16, after that review by the task force, and then on to the City Council, July 21, 2008. All of those public hearings, well attended. And I believe, if I'm correct, the Legal and Finance Committee meeting of July 16 and July 21 had over 50 written comments that were attached, as well as many people in the community giving testimony at both of those hearings. A special city council meeting was held to receive public comment on September 29, 2008. The Legal and Finance Committee and City Council requested the Mayor create a small task force to look at all the recommendations that had come forward, your discussions at the last special council meeting, and come back forward with the recommendation. That's why I'm standing here tonight. The Downtown Parking Committee was appointed by the Mayor and met on December 5, December 19, and December, January 5. Could you go back one slide just for a second? The December 5 meeting was a review of the input that had been given by the public, a discussion of that input, and some of the changes were made with regard to how the streets were designated for the time on the meters at that meeting. December 19, the meeting discussion centered around a good deal of resident parking. And when you see the plan, I think the resident piece in there is one of the things that got added, wasn't discussed very much in the other public comment meetings. On January 5, the purpose of that meeting was to discuss the elements that should go into the ordinance that's before you tonight. Okay, thanks, Monica. The goal of the Downtown Parking Plan is to meet the current parking needs of stakeholders and generate future revenues for future parking solutions. Future parking solutions are deemed to be parking ramps. We heard several times in conversation, both from the council and from people in the community, just exactly why are we doing this? What is the purpose? And the purpose was reaffirmed by the group from what we heard at the council meeting and from the community. We need parking ramps. The downtown parking also must create a perception, as well as the reality, of convenient parking for all users. And I made a comment earlier in my opening remarks, how important this is to people investing in downtown Rapid City. What is the plan? First of all, the free thing. The meters that we use, a wonderful new technology, and some of you may have seen the same email that I did today, but the ability to manage your parking plan and be responsive to what needs to be done with meters is being done in high tech. And the nice thing about high tech is you have options. The one that we've selected is the one that JJ brought forward to us, and we've looked at those in a couple of the public meetings. But they are, for instance, in this piece that was in the email, was a USA Today story. A town of 339 years of age out east is putting in new meters, and they're using the technology. College students save money because they don't know what their schedules are, and using the cards means you don't have to put in your money and lose it. You can take what's unused when you leave with your card. And what we also heard in public comment from business owners is, you don't have to stock Fort Knox full of quarters so your customers can park with you. Free 15 minutes, so when you run in, you can push the button, get a free 15, run out, get in your car, go on about your way. Meters are supposed to be colored to differentiate the different time limits. The different time limits are two hours, four hours, and 10-hour meters. And the second issue you have tonight is the costing of those. The cards are the big thing. You have kiosks. You put them in places that are open, like hotel lobbies 24/7, so that people can access those and pick up their cards. They can buy as much time on them as they want. If they happen to go to a four-hour meter and they have to leave in an hour and they hadn't planned on it, put the card back in the meter, get your three hours back. Cards can be refunded for unused time. There are the meters, the two-hour, 50 cent, four-hour, 25 cent, 10-hour, 25 cents. And while we're on that slide, that is consistent with the master plan. It has the economics of choice. It puts the most valuable parking closer to the core. It puts the lower-cost parking at the perimeter, and that lower-cost parking is an opportunity for employees, and we have thousands of employees in this parking district, to choose. They can either get a parking permit, if the city has them available, or they can park for 12 and a half cents an hour, but it's closer to the perimeter. The enforcement time in the ordinance was set at 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. There is no parking meter, or there are no parking meters in the plan on Main and St. Joe in the four-block area, I guess five blocks on St., on Main. In the un-metered areas, the first ticket is a courtesy ticket. It's free. It says, "We noticed you're a guest. We noticed you're in violation of our parking. Please be aware that we have parking." The second ticket, in 180 days, is a $10 parking ticket. The third, $15. And the fourth is a $20 ticket. You've got to be clean for 180 days to get out of that $20 cycle. These are the fines in the un-metered area. The fines in the metered areas are $5. Residential permits, I mentioned earlier that this was not talked about very much in the, in the open meetings, but we have a lot of people that live downtown. We have hundreds of apartments. We have some people in the district that live on streets, and they don't have any off-street parking. They have no driveway or garage. So we tried to count those, and I can tell you that if we issued in residential permits 125 a year, outstanding, I would be surprised. So it's not a big number in our district, but we have people that need a place to park. They need some choice. Cost of the permit, as proposed in the ordinance, is $40 a month. That's tied to, by the way, a covered parking slip in the ramp. That was the thing that we tied it to. Owner-occupied resident, these are people that have a home, but they have no off-street parking, can purchase an annual fee for $15. It's the administrative cost to issue the permit. The annual permit, and one per household, annual permit must be renewed every year with required documentation, and that's set out for you in the ordinance. Basically, driver's license, proof of residency, and vehicle registration. And we also set up that the parking, resident parking pass will designate three different streets adjacent to the address. So in other words, if you live on the west end of Quincy, and you have a residential permit, but you happen to work down on the east end of St. Joe, you're still going to be paying in the deal down there. You don't have a free permit to park all over downtown. These are the meters. We've been through these before. Basically, they operate on the coins. They operate on tokens, and they operate on cards. I'd like to take a moment for you just to take a look at the map. This changed a great deal from the first time you saw it. The first time you saw this, and very consistent with the master plan, those orangey-red lines that represent 10-hour meters were fairly consistent around the entire boundary of the parking area. And those are the 12 and a half cent an hour meters, 25 cents for two hours. And those represent parking for the employee group. They need to have a place, not in front of their business place, and these were, these were areas where they could park and have an affordable rate. It would be a choice if they weren't in a lot or in the ramp. Also want to make a comment. Kurt Weitzel is here tonight. I don't think Kurt has missed one of these meetings. The only reason I know that is I don't think I've missed very many of them. His business and another business is located on Ninth Street, where you see those 10-hour meters on, I guess it would be your left side of the screen. Is that the same for you? And he would be one of the few businesses that has 10-hour meters in front of his, his place. So I know that he's here tonight, as he has been, to ask whether you might put four-hour meters on that side of the street. There's been no request to change the 10-hour meters on the other side of the street. The, the yellow represent two-hour meters, and where you see yellow interspaced among the 10-hour meters, those are businesses that felt that the traction is good. Remember that the two-hour meter creates traction. People either have to move, or they have to, they have to do something. And if you're a business, and you, and you have customers coming and going all day, you want that traction. And that's what yellow meters do. The blue meters are four-hour meters, and they are 25 cents. And then the chartreuse color down there on Main and St. Joe are the non-metered areas in the plan.
Is that all I have on that?
I think. The cost of the plan. The meters, as proposed in this plan, would cost $700,000. I think we saw the scooters on display in the press this weekend, and kind of waiting to see when we get our ride. The district is larger than the existing district, and this is an efficiency and productivity move within that, within this plan, so that we can cover the district for the enforcement side of it. The kiosks, we're estimating four at this time, just so they're spread around in different places, so people can find them and use them. Remember, on, on weekends or visitors coming downtown, they're most likely to use coins, but for those of us that live and work downtown, the card seems will make a lot of sense. Then the installation, we have 1,200 new meters to install. Total cost, $880,000. This is a graphic spreadsheet that shows the different areas in the proposed and the existing, and what the difference is. Projected new revenue, over and above the existing revenue, these numbers came from what is proposed in the ordinance. In other words, the new meters, the rates that you saw, you saw, and enforcement from 8 to 5, Monday through Saturday. The money from the, and the, and the assumptions in there are, you know, they're, these aren't assuming that every meter is full all the time. They're, they're not. So the meter revenue in the district would be new revenue of $470,000. Projected enforcement revenue under this plan would be 90,000, additional $90,000, for a total of $560,000 a year in revenue. This was an important work of the committee, because none of us wanted to go through this exercise to find out that we would make these important decisions and not be able to provide the solutions, and that is money for more ramps. I put this example together for you as an illustration. If you bonded $6 million for a term of 20 years, and the rate you got was six and a half today, you could bond that $6 million with $536,808 a year, clearly under the 560. If you built a $6 million ramp, you would have somewhere between $140,000 and $190,000 of additional lease income a year that you could add to that. And that $150,000 would probably bond for you another million and a half. So there would be seven and a half in that, in that scenario. The parking meters are anticipated to cost the $880,000 you just saw. We propose that there's currently 2.8 million in the 2012 fund that was initially for the St. Joe and Six, where the Rushmont project was projected. Those funds were a public-private partnership to leverage it up and make more parking out of it. If you took $800,000 out of that fund and bought the meters, we would begin generating the revenue right away for that previous slide that you saw, the $560,000. It would still leave the $2 million to be used for new parking downtown. So you had $6 million. Here's another $2 million, and the leases and the enforcement income that would come to you, if you add it all up, looks about like $9.3 million. And I believe the Mayor said more than once that I think we spent $2,006,000 putting on the, $2,800,000 putting on the floor. So that kind of gives you an idea of what we're looking at. There were questions asked here and by the public. What does this mean that we're going to use that money? Where is it going to be used? Is it going to be just used downtown? Is it just for parking ramps? The parking area enterprise fund, for the most part, is collected and is spent downtown. It provides the money for enforcement. It provides the money for maintenance, and it provides the money for additional parking and parking structures. I think that the, the ordinance in front of you spells that out rather specifically. So what we're here tonight and asking after this presentation is that you approve the ordinance number 5479, as it was brought up to you, as you've heard from the public, and as it came out by recommendation from the Citizen Review Committee. We also found during our discussions that the city would be, it would be our recommendation to the city that you have a parking manager. Right now, all of those different areas, from enforcement to maintenance to the finances to the legal side, they're all handled very well departmentally, but nobody is responsible for the parking. And with this plan, obviously, we're going to have more money. We're going to have more responsibility, and it would be good to see whether somebody couldn't just be the head of that. And I, we don't propose that that's a new FTE for the city. I think the people that are doing the work now are going to be, continue to do the work, just need somebody in charge. And then this is the big one. The big question that came out, and I heard it from Alderman Chapman and from Alderman Wythenbach, where are we going to build a new one, and when are we going to build a new one? It seems that this committee and your decision here couldn't get tied up in that. Now that we know what the solution is in front of you, we can now start making those solutions with some certainty. So we recommend that a long-term parking solution committee be part of your recommendation in this, and that they get the work done to see where it can go, how the city can best leverage up that $9.3 million we're talking about tonight. And that will go a long way to putting more parking downtown, and hopefully attracting more investment downtown. This is the recommendation and the plan that the Parking Committee reviewed. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. I think what we'll do is, let's go ahead and go to the public, and then if there's any questions of either the public or of Monica and John Brewer, I think we'll come back. Is that all right, Ron? I see you have your light on. Okay, very good. Okay, thank you so much. Just a reminder, we do have speaker request forms, little white piece of paper. They're actually on the media table over here, to my right, to your left. If you do wish to speak, we, we would ask that you fill that out, and they'll bring it up. That way, as we make our way down the list, we're not going to overlook anybody. So if you'd just fill that out for us, and that way we know that there's, there's folks that are interested. I'm going to take these up in order that they were turned in. We typically have a time limit. We'll go ahead and turn the light on. We're going to be a little bit more flexible tonight. We just ask is, as you see the light turn from yellow to red, that you start basically wrapping up your remarks, but if there's an important point, we'll give you a little bit more latitude tonight. We, this is a little bit more informal for us. So first, on the speaker request forms, I have a speaker request form from Roger Frye. And there again, even though I know an awful lot of you folks, I'm going to ask you to please identify yourself when you come up to the podium for the record.
I'm Roger Frye. I have a business at 626 Sixth Street, Roger Frye's Paint and Supply. You've all heard me last time I was here, and I utter the same thing again. If you're going to be fair about meters, they should be all downtown. Don't just pick on businesses on side streets. My business is just as important as any of those businesses on Main or St. Joe. I have as much walk-in traffic and drive-up traffic as they do. I think the meters where they're at right now are fine, but I guess you want to change that. So, but that's my opinion. I think if, if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. But I think meters should be all over if you're going to put them anywhere else where they are now. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. We also have a speaker request form from Kurt Weitzel, 817 Ninth Street.
Thank you. I'm Kurt Weitzel, Weitzel Financial Group. First off, I'd like to say thanks for all the hard work that you guys have done. It's, I know it's been a long, long task. In reviewing the goals of the Downtown Parking Committee, one of the things that I noticed was the need for current users of downtown parking to generate additional revenue, which can be used to improve, expand parking in downtown Rapid City. With that goal in mind, one of the questions that I have, if we put in parking meters eventually, who's the primary benefactors of that? And kind of like Roger just got done talking about, is, you know, I believe that it should be, what's good for the goose is good for the gander also. The downtown parking area would generate a heck of a lot of revenue, and if we're looking at trying to build this stuff and getting that revenue, I think we should all share in it. I, I appreciate the opportunity to talk on that. I also see that when I looked at the committee who is representing the downtown area, most of the people that were on that weren't really subjected to the 10-hour meter. And I think that myself personally gave my opinion on that, but also, when I think about that 10-hour parking, I think we need to be represented here also, and that's why I'm here tonight. So, most of those people on that committee, it appeared to me, were downtown business people. And I think that's kind of like having me vote on which way the stock market should go. Please. So what is the master plan? I guess when I'm thinking about that, you know, we, we talked about it, and I know we don't want to clog this up all that much, but at the same time, where are these parking meters going to go? Or not meters, but the parking ramps, because that's obviously a concern of, of the overall group. And when I first started in, on this escapade and this project, one of my things was not to have parking meters at all, but as a change- to have parking meters at all, but as a change of heart, when I realized that the YMCA was going to go and have parking meters in front of their building, that if I didn't have parking meters in front of mine, even though I'm in the historic district, I would probably not have any parking whatsoever. And so, I've, I've kind of wavered on that, and I appreciated John making a recommendation. And he and I talked ahead of time, and I was cer- certain that we had talked about me having designated parking spots with no meters, and they're designated just for my building. But, okay, I got the light. But actually, what I was asking for was actually two-hour meters, not four hours, because again, if I have people parking in front of my, my building for four hours, it's just not going to be acceptable. So, again, I thank you for your time and your effort and your consideration.
Thank you, Kurt. Just for point of clarification, I want to make sure everybody understands, because there's been a number of discussions and points made about the latest committee. The thing you have to remember, and I think it was presented in, in the PowerPoint, the actual committee that made all the recommendations were made up of close to 40 different people. That's been going on for almost a couple of years now. The last committee that was appointed strictly looked at the recommendations that had, came from the larger committee, and so, they tweaked it a little bit, but the recommendations themselves were actually formed of a committee of almost 40 members, and I know that Alderman O'Kreppke was, was part of that, and, and also Alderwoman Karen Olson. I mean, we had a broad representation of a lot of folks, so I, I just want to make sure everybody understands, there was the original committee which made up of almost 40 people, and then there was a review committee very recently, within the last month or two, which was made up of, I believe, nine folks. But, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that point. And thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Kelly Thomas, I hope I got that right.
All right. My name is Kelly Thomas, and I own Motions Dancewear, which is next door to Roger Frye's Paint and Supply. Been there for almost five years now, really like that location. And I will say, when I moved my business, I did have a lot of my customers, because I was over on the west side, that gave me a lot of trouble when I first moved, because they said, "You're going where?" And I said, "Well, downtown," because I like downtown. Ah, parking, it's a nightmare. That's what I got from a lot of my customers. Ideal, I've said this before at council meetings, I deal with itty-bitty people. I deal with moms who often have several children in tow, trying to get in and out of my store. We deal mostly with children, and children's clothing and shoes and apparel, stuff like that. I do agree with Roger and everybody else, I think what's good for one is good for everybody. It's kind of odd whenever you want to pinpoint certain people out, but unfortunately, that does seem to happen. What I find ironic is the gentleman who was talking earlier, talking about how it's important for retail businesses to have traffic, to have people coming in and out quickly. Originally, whenever I first saw this plan, somewhere, I can't even remember where, it was proposed that we would have 10-hour meters, and whenever I came to the meeting, that had been changed to four-hour meters. I would love to have no meters. But like I said, my opinion is, is if one person should have them, everybody should have them. But what I find ironic, when the gentleman was talking about how we need to have traffic and we need to have people going in and out quickly, with our four-hour meters with a retail business, that's probably not going to happen, being that I am lucky enough to have office buildings all on top of, of the second story of my building, which more than likely, they will sit there, they'll plug their meter, and they'll stay there all day long. As I've said before, I don't mean to be mean, but I do want it to be inconvenient for them, because I would prefer that they find other parking than in front of my retail store. What I find ironic, as well, is Sixth Street, that particular block in between Kansas City and St. Joe is a very short block. There's only four businesses that face Sixth Street. Three are retail. And so, what I don't understand is if we want that quick turnaround, why are we putting four-hour meters in front of three of four businesses which are retail on that block? Two which have shown up to all the meetings that we have known about and have been very verbal about our dislike to the four-hour meters. So, that's my gripe. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. And just for everybody in the audience, we did put the map up, so as we start talking about this, whoever's up will actually circle the area. Monica, you had it circled for Kelly. Can you also identify for everybody's benefit, also Mr. Weitzel's property is right there, and then also Mr. Frye's, which is, I believe, the same block as what Kelly says? Okay? And so, as you come up, we'll actually identify those areas. Thank you, everyone. We also have a speaker request form from Tom Berger, and the address is 910 Fifth Street. Tom here? Okay. We'll go to the next one. We also have Charles Ray, 703 Quincy Street. And there again, Dr. Ray, if you'd just identify yourself for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Charlie Ray, 703 Quincy. Uh, Seventh, no, meters on Seventh Street are where I really, well, that's fine, that's fine. Yeah, that's all right. You know, my main concern is the meters in front of our building on Seventh Street that are 10-hour meters, and they're just the first 10-hour meters from downtown. My concern is that they'll be occupied all day long by people that work downtown. Maybe that won't happen, and I'd be willing to try that and hope that it doesn't happen, but there's nothing in the, in the, what I read on, on the proposed amendment that says that that can be changed. Once the 10-hour meters are in, there's nothing that says we can't change that. I would really prefer to have the two-hour meters that I have there now, because they work just fine and they don't cost anything. They're mechanical. I've got a few concerns about downtown, and I too think that perhaps everybody should have the meters, and with the 15-minute free button, that, that would really help with downtown shoppers, because they could go in and, and then, then merchants downtown could pay for the meters, just like I pay for the meters for people out in front of my building. That being as it is, that's neither here nor there. The other thing that I'm somewhat concerned about is that it seems like in this day and age, that these battery-powered meters should be solar-powered to save on batteries. I know that those batteries aren't free, and that they're going to go, they have to be recycled and taken care of, and I know that there are solar-powered meters on the market, because I've seen them. I also know that there are meters on the market that will read any debit or credit card, that you wouldn't have to have a special card. Another advantage is to have, another advantage to having the meters downtown is that you already police that area, so you wouldn't have any extra expense. In fact, you'd have less expense, because those people wouldn't be having the marked tires, they could just go along and write tickets. We're expanding the area from about 45 acres, as I figure, to about 75 acres. A person could just put the meters in downtown, they'd generate just about as much income. There are 1,125 free spaces downtown, two-hour free. I realize some of those are at the courthouse and some are at the city administration building, but you still have at least 900 spaces that could be metered, and that would generate somewhere around $500,000, according to the formulas that you showed me there. So, there's lots of possibilities, and I don't think this should necessarily be a done deal right away. But, assuming that you do go ahead and pass this, I would like you to please amend the ordinance so that I could have two-hour meters to park in front of my building. I have eight meters, I need every one of them. And so, if you could please consider that, and if I can't have two-hour meters, I think the next best alternative would be four-hour meters. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Ray. There again, just a point of information for everyone. The way the process works is, this is a city ordinance, so it does require two readings, what's on the agenda tonight if the council so chooses. They can act on the first reading, and if indeed they do act on the first reading, there will be at least two more meetings, both legal and finance, and an additional city council meeting. So, just for everyone's knowledge, any, any vote tonight is not a final vote, it would be a vote on moving the process forward. And so, I want to make sure everyone knows that there will be other opportunities as and if this moves forward. Okay? Thank you, everyone. Let's go to Estelle Wessel at 824 Columbus, number 403. And Mrs. Wessel, if you could just please identify yourself for the record, please.
Thank you. I'm Estelle Wessel from 824 Columbus Street, and I'm a homeowner there. We have 25 homeowners in that building. Now, we have five parking spaces on the Ninth Street, and we have five in front of the building that are non-metered and are free parking spaces. But we as homeowners, it's a rare thing for us to ever be able to park in one of those parking spaces, because before 8:00 in the morning, somebody has parked there, and they're parked there till 5:30 at night. It's an all-day parking thing, free for people. We, I'm not able to see on that map close enough to where we are, I can't figure it out. I looked on the internet and looked for a map and couldn't find it. What kind of meters are going to be put in front on Columbus Street?
Two-hour meters are here, two-hour meters on Columbus, and 10-hour meters on Main. You're right.
Okay. That's, yeah.
You're right here.
What we would really like is to have two-hour meters on both of those places. That would only be 10 parking places for about 40 people that we come and go during the day. We do have a parking garage for one vehicle, and, but every time we, every one of you, if you leave your homes and go someplace, invariably you forget something and got to go back home and get it, and you got to go back in the garage and go back. It's a lot easier just to be able to park and run up and get what you want. And two-hour parking meters would give us a chance once in a while. I have parked some in two-hour parking across the street that's not metered, but of course, I forgot and got tickets, you know? I've done that several times, too. But, it's just, you know, I think from what I've been reading in the paper, everyone would like to have more nice apartment buildings downtown, but there has to be some parking. And, you know, we that live there, that is our home. And if somebody comes to see us in the afternoon, they might have to park three blocks away in order to find a parking place to see us, because of the length of the parking there. And we just plead with you, please, if you have to put in meters, put in two par- two-hour parking meters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wessel. We also have a speaker request form from Steve Malone at 230 Main Street. There again, Mr. Malone, if you would identify yourself for the record.
230 Main, right to the building, right there in the corner. Hi, I'm Steve Malone, and I'm one of the few guys that just bought a new building downtown, so I'm, I, with all respect to John, I haven't gone to any of the meetings because I just closed down the building about two weeks ago. I bought the old Salvation Army building. So, I'm in the process of remodeling that, and, and I found a couple of things now that I've, I've been in it, and I, I, I got a couple of concerns, and, you know, the, the green area is, is basically two-hour, non-metered, and I'm going to have retail in my building also, and I guess I'd like, you know, the same as Roger said and some other people is, if their retail doesn't have to have metered parking, then I don't want my retail to have metered parking either. I think that's only being fair, even though I'm on the edge of the, the eastern side of the, you know, central business district and everything. I think there's some opportunity down at that end of Main Street that, that, you know, I got an empty lot next to me in Black Hills Federal Credit Union across the street, so I'd like to look into, you know, why not extend that green line all the way down to, to Main and Second. The, the second item is on Third Street side, and those of you who've been by the building, I've got parking on the Third Street side that's, that's basically illegal parking, but it's, it's been granted by a variance in 1985 that allows me to back from that parking lot into Main Street, or into, into, I'm sorry, into Third Street. And so, there's four spots out there that show right now as being four-hour metered, and according to a variance that is in effect with the building, they, they really can't be there. And that's, that's what I've found in, in my research, and I, I am a little late in this game, but, you know, I've been downtown working all my life, and I was glad to buy a building down there. So, I'm excited about what you guys are doing, and I just take that into effect, be fair to, you know, you're going to have metered parking in front of my business and have metered parking in front of everybody's. If you're not going to have it in front of everybody's, then don't put it in front of mine. That's, that's just a request. And then also look on that Third Street side to say, you know, I've got a variance in effect that really that you're, you're, you'll lose four parking spots along that Third Street side. So, keep that in mind. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Malone. We also have a speaker request form from Jim Crossman. And Jim, there again.
Thank you.
We've known each other forever, but if you'd identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim Crossman, thank you, committee, council members, I'm sorry. I want to thank the committee for, for taking into account a letter that I sent in, Third Street, I'm sorry, north of Main, Third Street. There you go. They did make some alterations there to four-hour meters. I would like to request that you consider pushing that to two-hour meters if meters are the preference. Currently, we are two-hour un-metered. One logistical thing to consider is that there is no curb and gutter on that street. On the east side, from Main to Rapid Street, no curb. And from the, on the west side, from the Ellie to Rapid Street, there is no curb currently. So, thank you for your time. I, my letter did state, and I'll read that for you, I average 300 vehicles per day on an annual average. Much, much slower now, much busier in the summer. We have 11 stalls in front of my property. That means they turn over 27 times a day. So, I would really prefer the shorter hour. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We also have a speaker request form from Julie Frye. There again, Julie. Almost feel like a class reunion here, but if you could just identify yourself for the record.
Yes. Julie Frye at 626 Sixth Street, Roger Frye's Paint and Supply. I, as well as Dad and Kelly, have spoken before in front of you. Kelly was kind of thinking, "Well, we should go for two-hour meters, it's better than nothing." I'm, I'm still sticking on no meters, I'm not into the compromising mode. I would like to know, for the record, because maybe I was not paying attention when it was said, but I don't recall it ever being said, what criteria was met, or what, what kept St. Joe and Main Street from getting meters? Why, why were they left out of the special treatment of meters when they're retail stores like we are? And like I've said before, and I told Kelly, I, actually, you can almost count Audra's too, for four pistachio, well, it's Eclipse, us, Motions, and Audra's. I mean, there's retail parking really for four spots there, and I don't think we should be penalized. We would like, if we, I mean, no meters. I'm still going for the no meters. So, the non, and we would, we're willing to save those tax dollars by you not having to buy them or put them in. But, we have to have, we have to have people coming and going. We, same like Kelly, those people in the offices up above will be plugging those meters all day long, and you guys, I, I think half of you have been in our business, and sometimes it's really, really busy, sometimes it's slow, but we have heavy things we carry in and out, and our customers come to us instead of like Menards or Lowe's and say, "You know what? We can pull right up, swing in, get our stuff and be out in no time." And if, and if we are hampered by somebody having to dig for a quarter, you know, and put it in, and I think if we need money this bad, maybe, never mind, I won't go there. But, I do have a thought I could share with you later. But if you could, if you could please put us in the two-hour non-metered, that would be fair, because we wouldn't want to be discriminating against us other retail stores on the sideways. But if you could tell me, please, why the two Main Streets were left out and got special treatment, that would be great. And if you could tell me yet tonight, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. We also have a speaker request form from Lee Geiger, 613 Main Street. There again, Lee, if you'd just identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm Lee Geiger, and we office at 613 Main Street and have for many, many years. First, I'd like to thank John Brewer for his very exceptional managing the meetings and, and the information and so forth. He was always a gentleman and very efficient and always ordered. He was always a gentleman and very efficient and always organized and always fair. And, uh, wanna thank him for that. Um, I have, I have a couple of things I wanna talk about. First is, um, and I brought this up before. I think it's real important for us to at least include language that would allow for the future installation of meters in the parking structure so that we can maximize both the utilization of those excellent spaces as well as revenue. And if we use the metered spot, uh, metered parking lot at Sixth and Main as an example, that's almost always a hundred percent occupied. I think we could move a lot of metered spaces into there and not infringe on the intention of leased spaces. And it could be experimental, but if we could include language, we wouldn't have to come back to that issue. And the ordinance would allow for the management of moving, uh, meters into there, uh, to maximize the use. That would be, that would be, I think, real helpful. Another smaller item that is not in the ordinance at the time that I could find is on Main and St. Joe, I know at least with the high speed that people move through there, we do have from time to time vehicles that don't park close enough to the curb and get their rear end out of the driving lanes. And I think it'd be useful to add a little language. Currently, I think in Section 1044080, which has to do with double parking and overlying parking, might be an appropriate place to insert some language regarding that. A third item that has some concern for me is the question that's come up about not metering Main and St. Joe versus, um, versus the graduated fines. I think that, you know, that whole graduated fine thing grew out of, 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 of some people that have justifiable, uh, exasperation with the kind of parking opportunities that are taken from their business because of the kinds of businesses that surround them and the abuse of some employees. But, um, but the fact of the matter is that I think that in looking at a six-month period to go free without a parking ticket in that area, twenty-dollar fines, I think those are excessive. I'd encourage us to look at two options. Either reduce, um, uh, reduce the total fine amounts and reduce the period. So if you're looking maybe a thirty or sixty-day period, maximum fines at ten dollars, uh, something along that line. And the, uh, or consider going to meters, as Deb Hadcock has suggested from time to time, on Main and St. Joe and, and putting them in to conform with the rest. So, uh, other than that, the only other item I, I would bring up is I question the appropriateness of, of meter maids out there on Saturdays. There's, there are a lot of parking space on Saturdays. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee. We also have a speaker request form from Brian Vulcan at 517 Seventh Street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Brian Vulcan, um, with Forefront Design. Uh, I come tonight as not only a business owner, but a property owner as well. And I, uh, right in the middle of Seventh Street between St. Joe and Main Street. I, we, I, I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the plan as presented. My employees, uh, were lucky enough to be able to, to lease space, uh, from the city in one of the parking ramps. I think that this, uh, parking plan will afford more opportunity to build more parking ramps and do things, uh, throughout the city. Our folks walk, uh, between, uh, one and a half and two blocks to work. And, and we don't really have a problem with that. And I know people come and go in front of our building and, uh, we do not let our employees park in front of our building and, and use up some of those spots for the retail, uh, folks that are on there. And I, I think if we all exercised some discipline, uh, we could curb a lot of that. I truly appreciate all the different things that are, are said here tonight. Everybody has a different perspective on things. We could debate this, uh, for another sixty years that, just like has been debated now. But I, I think that any plan that, um, is executed well is far better than no plan at all or a plan that's never executed. I encourage you to pass it as is. Put some, uh, put some apparatus in place that people can make tweaks as they go along. If you try and fix every, every concern that everybody has in front of their building, you're never gonna get there. I think that a lot of people like you have put a lot of time into this. They've come up with a good plan. So I'd, I'd just like to voice my, uh, my support of this plan and, and hope that you pass it and we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any additional speaker request form. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before we close the public comment? Let me see if there's anyone else drilling, then I'll let you come back up. Anyone else that'd like to, to comment? Mr. Sefner. There again, if you'd please identify yourself for the record.
I'm Dan Sefner. I've been, uh, I'm a downtown business owner, property owner, since, uh, been working downtown since I was nineteen years old. I share a lot of parking comments, been to a lot of parking meetings. I think I had hair when the parking meeting started for downtown. In 1977 or 78, they tore buildings down downtown to add parking ramps and parking facilities. To this point, we've not seen that, we've worked on that. I understand the comments in the audience looking at Main and St. Joe and many other things. I think Main and St. Joe are quick traffic areas. We got a lot of traffic that flows through there and we know that. I believe it's our hottest core areas of downtown. I believe there are more businesses on Main and St. Joe than surround anything around us. I believe there is less parking availability on Main and St. Joe than there is on the side streets. 'Cause I've seen it, I've lived it, I've walked it, I've, I've seen it for years. So, you know, as you look at this, we need to start somewhere. What is fair? How do you please everyone in this room? You don't. How do you please everyone downtown? You don't. I know that, you know that. But I know this, we need revenue to build ramp. We need to start somewhere. And I agree with some of the other comments, we need to leave room for tweaking. There needs to be changes, there needs to be things that can happen in a year from now, whatever, and to make things work. But we need to start because we do need another ramp. We did tear buildings down to build a ramp. And I was young when that was done. And we, a lot of us in here, this room, know who, with who they were and where they were. So, and I agree with the other comments in the audience also. Why are you moving downtown? My gosh, where are you gonna park? What are you doing there? I've listened to that for years. People do find a place to park, we know that. But for people working and living downtown, it's very important to have a place to park. So I encourage starting a plan, moving a plan forward, getting something going. Because I've listened to a lot of parking meetings and I really would like to see something moving forward. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else that hasn't spoken tonight that'd like to come up? And then, okay, Fred, if you would. And there again, Fred, if you would identify yourself for the record. What we'll do is, I'll continue to, to ask if anyone would like to speak that hasn't spoken. And then, and there again, we're gonna be a little bit more flexible tonight. Uh, we'll give other people just a very short opportunity to come up and make some additional remarks. But we're gonna keep that very short. But Fred, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Fred Thurston. I own three historic buildings in the downtown. Uh, and I really do appreciate everybody's work on it. And I appreciate probably more than it, some may, may realize, um, that this does not solve all the problems. It's good for a couple of my buildings, it's not good for another one. Parking has been a problem. I've owned buildings for twenty-seven years downtown now. Um, it's been a problem from the very beginning. It's getting better. It would get better if, if somehow we could prevent, uh, some of the, the businesses from allowing their, their staff to park on the street. But this is a start and I think that we need to start somewhere. Uh, there isn't any magical solution that's going to resolve it all. Getting another parking structure would certainly be advantageous. But I encourage you to, to take a look at this real seriously and approve it. And if we need to adjust it in the future, allow the flexibility to do some adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Anyone else that would like to speak that has not had the opportunity tonight? Anyone else? Going once, twice? Okay, if not, anyone who would like to make another short comment has spoken. I know Julie, you'd like to say another word or two? Yep. What we do is, we just ask that you keep it fairly short, if you would.
Thank you for handing me this. Uh, Mr. LaCroy handed me a thing from Monica Heller. I don't know when it was written, but it said, "In the last eighteen years, there've been a few meters added and some meters, ti- time restrictions have changed mostly." And they highlighted "at the request of individual businesses." So I guess you guys have been working with individual businesses for years to, for what works for them. And a lot of people have been saying the parking's bad. The parking is fine for us. We have never complained, I don't think, to you guys at all about the parking in front of our store. It, it works for us, it works for our business, people come and go quick. So if you have problems with the problem areas, you know, if there's people, you could work on those areas. But we're fine and content just the way things are. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you. Any additional comments? If not, hurt, and there again, I would, I would just ask you to keep it, uh, short, if you would, please.
Sure. There's one thing I forgot to mention when we were talking about that earlier and that's, uh, the revenue that would be generated if we did decide to, um, to, uh, meter the downtown area was supplied to me in a, a report. And it appeared to me that if we metered Main and St. Joe, it'd generate another $290,000 a year, which is a fifty-one percent increase of what we'd be, what we're proposing. And that's all I had to add. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else like to make a final comment? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and close the public comment and we will go to the City Council now. And I, thank you. We have motion second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, seeing public saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. We're to council discussion, interaction. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have, uh, a couple of questions for Mr. Brewer, if I could.
Okay, go ahead, please.
John, on the, the two-hour, non-metered on Main and St. Joe, that basically means that it stays as it is. Parking meter, or the, the meter maids will walk by, tag the, the car. If they haven't moved in two hours, they get a ticket, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I, I, I thought that's what it was, but, uh, you had mentioned, I'd never heard the phrase before, but you, regarding parking, but you talked about traction and like two-hour parking starts to create traction. For future presentations that you might have, I would say that for a couple more phrases you might use, uh, four-hour meters could be called slippery and the ten-hour meters could be called stuck. Because they ain't gonna go nowhere. Just for future presentations.
Might I, might I respond?
Uh, hang on, I don't think we're gonna let you, but...
I just wanted to say that, uh, the word traction isn't mine or came from the local discussion. Joel Lundin, uh, from the City Attorney's Office was our legal counsel on the committee and, uh, and Monica. And we researched an awful lot of other community plans and tried to find good things to put in this that applied in Rapid City. And the word traction comes, uh, uh, I believe, uh, one of the speakers talked about, uh, or, uh, interpreted that to mean that I was saying we need quick turnover. It's not quick turnover, it just indicates that there is traction, uh, that, uh, comes from the meter. The other thing we found out in, in that, the stuck meters, just because you pull into a ten-hour meter, somebody that's as tight as I am might park up there for twelve and a half cents and just walk three blocks. And I might only be there for an hour. I'm not gonna stay there ten hours, so. Okay?
Mayor, I, I do have, uh, a couple other, or one other question. I, I know it was last, or last summer, last fall, when we had this discussion at a council meeting, I had brought up the issue that, you know, in, in any other area, town, that's not in the business, business district, if you own a business or a retail store, that you have to provide, uh, parking for your employees and for, uh, patrons of the store. Where the downtown business district, we don't have to do that. And I had mentioned that I would like to see something like a paving district or something that could possibly put into effect to help pay for a parking ramp. And I know you've talked about, uh, you're looking at a bid, uh, to possibly do downtown. Could you just tell us briefly where you're at on that possibility?
John?
Uh, is that, uh, I, I can speak to the answer. The, um, the Business Improvement District is a, uh, tool used in over a thousand communities. It was recommended in the Brooks Report. It was talked about in, uh, terms in the task force when we talked about creating a downtown management association. We have generated a district, uh, we have briefed, afraid we missed your opportunity, uh, to show the slideshow to the council. So most of the council folks have, have seen what we thought we would propose and what we're working on. Uh, we have talked to, at this point, a little over fifty percent of the people in the district. Uh, they have signed, uh, a document supporting the plan. Uh, and with respect to the discussion tonight, business improvement districts throughout the nation are normally involved in helping parking in the communities they serve. Deadwood, for example, used a single business improvement district to build the, the ramp in, in Deadwood. Uh, it's tremendous value to them and it was paid for by just the parking fees up there. So, uh, we don't propose to build a parking ramp with our business improvement. It's, ours is a small one, it's defined as a small one. And, um, uh, as opposed to one office building in New York that has a seven million dollar, uh, business improvement district, ours will only be a couple hundred thousand. Uh, we propose to bring that to the city. And in that, we have put aside scheduled money to, uh, show the council to help the people in the district with parking enhancement.
Okay, anything else, Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, John. I, I...
Uh, I, I, I did have one other comment to the same question, if I could, Councilman Kroger. And that is that, um, the, the proposal about, um, parking and, and wherever is really part of that long-range parking committee. Some of these solutions really should come from that long-range parking committee and the tweaks that people have asked that you consider. I think when that committee, if formed by this body, does their work, I think they'll be ready to come back to you rather quickly now that they would have this tool in place. And they'd be able to recommend some of those things that people are seeing as, as necessary as an action coming out of this. And once again, I'd remind you that, uh, the purpose of the parking plan, the whole exercise, was to, uh, solve those future propping solutions. And, uh, we feel pretty strongly that the nine million that we pointed out to you is, is sitting there waiting to do it.
Okay, Mr. Kroger, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, John. I, I guess my last comment would be is, you know, is whatever we decide tonight. I think everybody needs to remember that, you know, the main goal here is to provide revenue so we're able to provide parking for everyone downtown, be it, uh, you know, a business on Main Street or a business on Quincy or Kansas City. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you. I, I was just asking for a little additional information before we move into the, um, discussion point. Um, I heard reference to the fact the meters, um, handle slots, cards and money. And, um, my impression was it was just cards and money. Um, I wanted to make sure everyone in the audience understands plugging, when, where you can re, um, replug a meter and where you could not. I understood that you can pull up on the curb if you have an extra-long truck and that that's not illegal. And so that's already existing. And, um, those were the four items that I hoped maybe Monica just make crystal clear to everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go. Monica, did you have something to add?
I was gonna answer Karen's if...
Okay, go ahead.
Um, as far as what the meters can take, they can take coins, the prepaid parking cards, and that's it. Um, there is the button that you can push that you get the free fifteen-minute. As far as feeding the meters, keep, if you know, you can, right now, the way the ordinance is written, there's no restriction to feeding the meters. So if you park at a two-hour meter, you could come back out there after two hours and put another couple quarters in and get a longer time. You would not have to move your car. Um, you could continue to put money in, but you'd have to go out and do that. Was that all you?
And the last one was pulling up on the curb and you'll say it's allowed.
Believe that is allowed.
Yes. Thank you, Karen. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanted to interrate, this is our seventh meeting on parking. I'm in support of what the motion on the floor is, uh, to move it forward. But there did, there was a couple good points that were brought up. You know, uh, Jim from Harvey's Lock Shop, I mean, yeah, they have no curb or gutter on there. So I do see that as a concern, uh, number one. And number two, I, I wanted to answer Ms. Frye's questions about how Main and St. Joe got, uh, don't have meters and, and that come back and when the mall, and I asked Monica this. Back when the mall opened up and, and the downtown businesses wanted to, felt that they were gonna lose business for that. And that's why I gave you that, that piece of paper. And I, and I still see that as a concern for, for, for downtown. With now with Rushmore Crossing opening up, two, we still got... Two, we still got even more, so I think we need to do something and, and move forward. There is a little bit I think we need to work on, uh, as far as we want people to even live downtown. I don't think it's fair to have just one person, uh, have a $15, uh, $15, uh, parking card. But that's something we can work out within the next two meetings. But those were, I just wanted to try and answer some of your, some of your questions for you and let you guys know we still got two more meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Is this the time if I want to suggest to put, um, the unified plan together to put, um, Main and St. Joe with meters? I can make that motion to this plan?
The appropriate motion would be to amend the plan. And then we would discuss the amendment only, and then the motion would either pass or fail, and then we'd be back to the original motion. So, the amendment would be, an amendment motion would be the appropriate motion.
That would be my amendment is to add Main and St. Joe at this time. And, uh, why I'm saying this again, and I started this at the beginning. The goal, when we first started this and 20, 30 years ago, was to do parking ramps and to get revenue for those parking ramps. And it's gonna take a team or a unified plan at this point. And I believe for the vision of the future, to get that plan done, it takes everyone involved. And I think, uh, it will be faster. If you look at page 47, and this was, Mr. Kestrel pointed this out again, and I appreciate that. It does say in the core areas that there should be the highest amount of paid parking, and it also should be metered. So if you look at the plan, and it was done in 1991, it, it says that. And again, um, we are trying to make a difference downtown. And part of that difference is gonna make the, is, is gonna have the team all putting money into this, not just the outlining areas. It has to be fair to everybody. So at this point, in order to be a unified plan, um, I think everybody needs to be involved. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. The discussion will be on the amendment only, so we will reserve any comments or any discussion as far as to the basic plan. We will be dealing with the amendment only, please. Sure. Deb, could you please repeat? Wait a second, you seconded it, you don't know what it said?
Main and St. Joe.
I know, okay, I'm kidding.
Main and St. Joe metered, thank you. Two-hour meters.
And Monica, did you have something we need to deal with?
Just wanted a clarification, because the current plan also does not have meters on 7th between Main and St. Joe, 6th between Main and St. Joe, and 5th between Main and St. Joe. So are we also talking about metering those side streets also?
Right, everything needs to be unified. Thank you, Monica.
Okay. Discussion on the amendment. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I have a tendency to support the amendment, but I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed that this is happening because we have a special meeting here and I wanted to comment about the whole parking plan itself, not just the, the particular amendments, so.
And just, you know, you'll absolutely have that opportunity once we dispense of the amendment, because once we have an amendment on the floor, under Robert's rules, it, you really need...
Right, I understand it, Mr. Mayor. I'm just a little bit disappointed that we set apart a, a meeting for me to come here on a, on this night and set this meeting with all these people and I can't go forward with talking about the whole thing. But I do support, you know, pieces of this amendment, but I think there's a lot more. And they may mean a lot more to it, but there's some other issues that we need to address at the particular, at the same time, because there's still questions in my mind. So I'm, I don't know how to approach that now, but, uh, just if I have to, if I'm stuck to the amendment, I'll talk about the revenue, understanding the goal, and we had these conversations before. And I asked what the goal was, and I have a, a clear understanding that the goal is to provide for, uh, future and, uh, parking downtown and parking ramp would be the goal. And, and to, in order to do that, you're gonna need revenue. And looking at these numbers that one of our, uh, citizens in the audience pointed out is the fact that, uh, without metering Main and St. Joe, you're getting $560,000 a year in revenue. If you add Main and St. Joe to the metering, that's another $290,000 in revenue. I'm not sure for the reasoning of why not, uh, metering Main and St. Joe. I haven't heard a good argument against it. I've only heard good arguments for being fair. It seems like if we look at Main and St. Joe as, as the type of the epicenter that we have there, and in that whole core area, there's, there's no meters. If, uh, if we do have a parking problem or an illusion, illusion of a parking problem, that would probably be one of the areas where it began. So what we've done is we've taken that epicenter, had a little earthquake, and we've shaken it out, out to the outline areas where we're, some of the business people in here who all should be treated fairly and the same, are gonna have, gonna get stuck with long-term parking. Looking at the essence of it and being fair, and just because of a numbers game that somebody had mentioned in here earlier, it would, it would also be relevant that because there is fewer businesses in this outline areas, that they, they don't have the same amount of representation. And if you have a committee, they can be outvoted. A committee is simply to bring forward a recommendation. And I gotta applaud the committee for bringing forward the recommendation. And specifically, Mr. Brewer and his, his, uh, persistency to get this accomplished. I was ready to vote on this last time, and I'm hoping tonight, as we move forward, that we do move this thing forward. I'm in agreeance with the two-hour parking, uh, on Main and St. Joe, but I have a hard time accepting the 10-hour parking on the outskirts of the downtown area. And I'm having a little bit of difficulty and a little bit of stomach acid with the four hours. And if, if I had my, my brothers and to get something going, I think a fellow here tonight made a, made a, a comment about getting something started. Well, I understand that. But if, if we start out in the wrong position, and we're putting a lot of burden on a lot of these other business people and these business folks that are downtown. And we, and we enjoy having a parking problem, we enjoy having people invest their money in downtown. And to do it right and to get the parking meters, the revenue is a big part of this project. Also, the parking authority, which I'm not allowed to talk about right now. But talking about getting back to Main and St. Joe, um, I would, I'm hoping tonight that we come up with, if we do do the Main and St. Joe, that we're consistent across the board downtown, move everything to two-hour parking. And I had a question for Monica.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, Monica?
When you mentioned plugging the meters, is there a way to, to stop the plugging of the meters that someone would have to back their car out?
We could write the ordinance so that you could not feed the meter.
Okay, an ordinance would only stick if somebody was standing there watching them do that.
Then what would probably happen is the meter enforcement folks would still have to mark the tires. So that would still have to happen, and when they walked by, if the car had not...
Okay.
So, yes, but right now that's not...
They're gonna be walking by anyway, and so that, that's a possibility, that makes sense. So plugging the meters is out of the question. Putting the, the meters across the board on Main and St. Joe, treating those fellows the same as the, the outline businesses makes sense. So I would support that, and I'm hoping that we move a little bit farther tonight and, and get rid of some of this 10-hour and, and four-hour parking that may be a burden to some of these people that have businesses that are just as, just as important as these businesses on Main and St. Joe. And I, I, I hope that we move forward and, and come up with a first reading tonight, so. But that would be moving forward, I hope, something that we talk about, so. I'll leave it at that. I have some other comments I'll say, but since I'm tied to just the amendment, because I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. Let's go to Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share Ron's concern that I think an amendment was put on the floor too quickly. I, I think there's still a number of us who would like to have conversation or questions answered about the overall plan before we then just talk about an amendment. I would ask our council president maybe to withdraw the amendment so that we can open up the conversation, although I agree with putting meters on Main and St. Joe. But I think there's still some other questions to ask. Mayor, if I could have just a little leeway.
Malcolm, I, I think I held, uh, Mr. Wyffenbach pretty close to the amendment, and I guess my apologies, I'm gonna do the same for you, I hope you understand.
I should know better to ask for permission. I should know better.
Yes.
That's right, I'm trying to be respectful. I, I will with...
Okay. So, uh, is there any objection to withdrawing the motion? Because the motion does belong to the floor at this time. Any objections? If not, the chair will deem that the motion has been withdrawn. We're back to the original motion and we'll go, uh... Okay, very good. We're gonna, we're gonna go to, uh, Ron Wyffenbach, and then we'll come back to Malcolm Chapman. Mr. Wyffenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Chapman, as you so elegantly finished that for me and put in, put me back in the driver's seat here. But I think that one of the fellows that just bought the Salvation Army building there, putting on an important factor that he has, there's no curb or gutter in, in front of his building on the 3rd Street side. That would be something we needed to address tonight, too. But the main thing I wanted to get across is the businesses are what's driving the, the parking ramp and they're drive the downtown. If we leave here tonight, I'm hoping that we put in place some sort of a parking authority or something that gives them the flexibility, say, um, we'll use the Fry's, for example, and Rogers, Roger Fry Paint and Supply. If, if the two-hour meter or whatever happens to be the end result doesn't work tonight, that they don't gotta come back to us and go through some long and lengthy 10, 15-year process to try to fix the problem that may drive or hinder their business. So whatever happens to that, I'm gonna support the end result as long as there is some sort of a parking authority or something available that makes a quick turnaround time for businesses that have particular needs. Say, um, the, some of the businesses on Main and St. Joe, if they don't have meters or they do, that they can, they can come to the parking authority and look at the ability to change that swiftly and look at the reasoning and, and make a fair and, uh, good decision that would not hinder their business. This is the last thing we wanna do, is hinder somebody's business and, and not be fair to everybody involved. And I think putting four hours in some of these places and two hours in some of these other places, yeah, it serves a purpose. If I had a, if I, quite frankly, if I had a business on Main and St. Joe, I wouldn't want a meter either. And I think anybody in here would rather not have a meter. And if they had a biggest, bigger voice and opinion, they would say, no meter in front of my business. Unfortunately, we, that's not what the goal was or was set forth in this, uh, commission, in the committee in bringing forward the recommendation. So I would suggest that we, across the board, meter everything two hours, put a parking authority in place, look at, uh, I think Mr. Geiger talked about metering some of the ramps to allow for more parking space and, and move forward with it and, and come up with a solution to start with and that would be fair to everybody across the board, then make changes. The other thought I had is that, I'm not sure, I believe the parking ramps are, if somebody could give me the, the number of what a parking elite lamp, ramp costs to lease a space. Mr. Preston?
It's $30 for uncovered, $40 for covered.
Yes, sir.
$40?
For covered.
Okay. Is if, on the price of the meters, if you have a two-hour meter at 50 cents, um, for two hours, it's about a quarter an hour, comes out if you work 40 hours a week to about 40 bucks a month. So, I mean, that could, we're maybe creating some little bit of an incentive for people to plug the meters. If we have the option to mark the tires, um, if, if, you know, provide the meter people with, uh, the carts to move more quickly throughout the city as they're gonna have a bigger area, then, then I'd be in favor of something like that. But to, uh, not meter Main and St. Joe and, and create hardships in some of these other areas with, with four and 10 hours, I think would be the wrong thing to do. If we came straight across the board and said, everybody gets two-hour meters, and then we had to put a parking authority in place, and we can make quick adjustments without having to come back to the council, so, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to, I'm gonna go back to Alderman Malcolm Chapman, and then we'll go to Alderwoman Olson. So Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I can support, um, the ask of the task force, which is to approve first reading of the ordinance to somehow come to, um, creating some spot or position for a parking manager and then appointing a long-term parking solutions committee. I could support those. I do have some problems, though, with how we're getting here because I think initially, when we had that meeting in September, I put the motion on the floor to appoint a small committee to look at this and then come back and, and give the council some recommendations. I voted for the committee that was formed. I disagreed with the committee that was formed. I asked that a committee of Monica, of JJ, and council leadership come back so that we could have a smaller group that could vet all of those concerns that we heard. Because in my mind, yeah, we're moving forward, but it's at a snail's pace. Because what we're hearing is the same concerns that we heard before. We're hearing the same arguments that we heard before. And here we are now, up on the diish, trying to say, move this meter, cut that to four, give this to six. And we're at the same place, I think, that we were a few months ago in terms of the council being clear on exactly what's being done. We're trying to change the plan on the fly, and I disagree with that. That's why I asked that a small committee of those be formed, just to then vet all of that and then come to the council and, and just have that discussion. That's not where we are. I could support the, the plan overall, but I have some concerns and I have some questions that I'm not sure we're gonna answer in this kind of format. But my concerns, as I voiced before, was I don't understand that if you own a place downtown, that somehow you get a parking pass for $15 a year. And if you rent a place downtown, you pay $40 a month. I don't understand that. I don't understand the logic in that at all. I think that we need to change this somehow to put meters on Main and St. Joe. And I fully support, um, the idea that we, and I tried to get the committee to talk about this early on. I couldn't make the first two meetings, and I said that initially, that I thought there was a role for that committee to talk about the money that was in the 2012 fund to be able to fund this. So, um, as we move forward, I still have some questions and some concerns how we get there. But overall, I think we need to move the plan forward, and I could support those things. But in between first and second reading, I will be talking with Monica and talking with council members and, and the public to figure out some of those changes that I think need to be made with the plan.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've watched this process, um, over a long period of time. And, um, I think it's important that we move forward with something this evening that we will be able to, um, have a first reading of, um, at our next meeting. I think that's important. I also recognize that, that there, I think, Mr. Brewer's suggestion that there be a long-term solution committee, that's probably a good idea. I understand Mr. Wyffenbach's, um, concerns, um, and even Ms. Fry's concerns. We do, in fact, tweak this. Um, it's almost a kind of a squeaky wheel kind of function. People come in and they have some really good reason why the council should give them two or three parking spaces. And in the time I've lived, been on the council, that's happened a number of times. I think the only challenge to that is, uh, I think it's very confusing to the general public. I'm hoping that this plan with the multicolored, with the different colored heads will add some, um, continuity in terms of users of parking spaces. Frankly, I park downtown and sometimes I don't know for sure whether it's two hours or four hours or whatever. I hear Mr. Wyffenbach's concerns, but I think at this point, for us to go back and change everything into two-hour parking throughout the entire district really does set back, that essentially sends the plan back to square one. And I don't, and while I understand his concerns, I don't think that's the right step for us to do. I think we have something that makes a high level of sense, uh, and I will support, um, the plan generally. I would have to say that early on in the discussion on the, when the revitalization task force was looking at parking, there was a lot of conversation about meters everywhere. And the point of metering everything was the fact that the revenue stream is so much more substantial, which then allows parking, meter, parking structures and other parking solutions to come about much more quickly. And I think that's an important thing for us to happen. In the, in visiting Boise, Idaho, um, they have a number of structures. It has totally turned around the vitality of their downtown. And I see that that would be the same thing that has potential in our community as well. So I think expediency then calls for this larger, um, issue of mon, of, um, metering everywhere. I will support the plan, um, because I think a lot of hard work has been put at it. And I agree with Malcolm that for us to tweak it in any kind of major way probably sets back the plan and sends us back to square one, and I won't support that. So, um, just generally speaking, I think we have come forward with something that is, um, doable. I think there's a revenue stream. I think that's very important, that there is a revenue stream. You can't, there, it's a horrible pun, but there is no free parking. In fact, someone's paying for free parking. So I think this plan, um, deserves careful consideration, and I will support, um, the general concept of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just wanted to express to the public that we have come a long ways. I mean, in 1999, we built the parking ramp, and now we just put the third story on it. We put parking across the street, opened up more spaces in the parking ramp. And the main reason what, for that was to get the employees from the businesses to park in those to free up the downtown. My, my vision is, is, is I'm gonna stick with the plan that was presented to us 'cause I think they worked hard on it and, and so forth. And I understand the vision from the Roger... And I understand the vision from the Roger Brooks as far as the districts for the downtown. You know, we have the restaurants, we're having events going on downtown and we constantly have groups come up and want free parking for, uh, a certain period of time or so forth. And so I think the way it's set, Main St. Joe set up, I, I agree with because we have so much that's going to start going on, going downtown. You know, that, that somewhere on Seventh is just amazing. It's, it showed you how much people we, how much, how many people we can get downtown, things going on that are going to bring everybody's business around there because they're going to be walking down to the doll, they're going to be walking all the way around downtown. And that's what I kind of like to, to remind people, the public, this is just a start. And, you know, I respect all your guys' concerns on this, but I just, I guess I would, uh, hope you'd understand that, you know, I'm, I'm going to be voting for with the plan that was presented. And as Mrs., Mr. Weifembach talked about, you know, I do think we need to have a, a quick turnaround. If something's not working for someone, we can work with that and change it around it. And that's what my goal would be, is to work with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to go to Patty Martenson who has not had the opportunity to speak yet.
Thank you. I too support the, um, plan in general. And as far as, uh, Main and St. Joe, I think we have long gone into the habit of thinking of downtown and being solely Main and St. Joe. If we wanted to revitalize downtown, we have to consider pretty much every street as essentially Main and St. Joe, not just that. Because I think we've gotten too much in the habit of treating Main and St. Joe as special when we should be treating all the businesses and all the streets equally.
Thank you. And just for procedural, does anyone wish to speak before Alderman Weifembach speaks for a second time? It's hopefully his turn to light. If not, let's go to Alderman Ron Weifembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that I, I know there's been a lot of work that's gone in this, but I still haven't heard any good reasoning for treating any one business different than another business. If I'm a business owner and the business is driving the downtown and I'm, I have my business downtown and I've got ten hour parking in front of my business and it's full of downtown employees or whatever because they've been forced out there because they can park there for ten hours. And it's, it stymies my business. I don't think it's a good plan. I don't think that's, for those particular people, I don't think it works. And I, so I, I just want to reiterate the point when I'm telling you that I don't think the ten hour and some of the four hour is appropriate. And I'm not, I'm not here to, to, to pick and change those meters. I just think that we need to think about this. And if it, if it, if, if I have to pass this just to get it going to the second reading, I will be doing my due diligence again, such as I have, to try to figure out why these people would be treated any differently than any other business on Main Street, St. Joe, or one of the other streets are that have two hour. I think that if we want people to move downtown, move their businesses downtown, then we got to give them the same opportunities. I just can't, I can't understand why a ten hour parking in front of, uh, an investment place that has maybe three or four parking spots and is, and has clients there and they're full, their clients have nowhere to park. I mean, those parking spots got to turn just like every other parking spot that turns. So I'm just, I urge my colleagues to think about this, use a little bit of common sense and put yourself in the driver's seat of one of these business owners out here who don't want two or four, or four or ten hour parking in front of their business. I just think it's fair and it makes sense to think about it and look at it. But I do want to move forward with the parking plan like I'd said earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bill Ocrepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I was asked by, by Alderman Olson and the former mayor Shaw, three and a half years ago when I first came on board the, uh, the city council to try to figure out and work with the, the parking issues. You know, uh, do we want a parking ramp? What's, what's that to look like? How should we adjust our parking to, to make it more effective? And the, what was the original objective for this whole thing? Or what's this whole, what's the objective for this process that we're going through? And that was to revitalize the downtown. And that was to make the downtown core, which dealt with Main and St. Joe's and east and west of that, was to provide the, uh, the ability for a quick turnaround. That was the objective. It was all about making the downtown exciting and viable and, and, and having the people not sit in the, in the, in these, on these streets all day long. And that was the whole purpose of that. And so the idea was, is if we can provide opportunities to park away from those and make it, and encourage people to move out into the second and third and fourth blocks away, that would open up the downtown core for customers. And that was the whole purpose of this thing. That's what the whole driving, the whole driving force of this whole exercise of the three and a half years we've been working on it since I've been here. So we, we worked on it, we put together plans, we had several different committees. Alderman Olson was, was part of one, I was part of one. There was other ones that came along. And we've, and we found that the government driving the train wasn't always the right answer. It didn't provide the right necessary stakeholders. And I keep saying stakeholders. Those are the people that own the businesses, those are the people that own the, the properties. They're the ones that have the nickel set, they're the ones that have all their investments in it. They're the ones that worked and, and laughed and cried and, and developed their businesses. They're the stakeholders. They're the ones that should be making the decisions on what needs to be done. And we looked at Roger Brooks, they came in and he made a lot of suggestions, good suggestions to, to help support the downtown businesses. And we've taken those and, and we've tried to incorporate some of those things. Well, we found out that it's, it was best and more productive if we could have someone in the, that represented the downtown businesses to come up with a better solution. Hence, Destination Rapid City led by, uh, John Brewer. He then was able to talk with the stakeholders, the true stakeholders, and get them all on board. And he spent several months working on that. He went and worked and he talked to a lot of people, got a lot of buy-in. And, you know, we look at the audience here and we see there's fifteen, twenty, twenty-five of us, twenty-five of them out there that, that are saying, no, we really don't want to do this, we'd want it, we want to change this or we want to change that. But we don't see the four hundred people that, that John Brewer and his group got together and said, no, this is a good plan. Now, there's a few of us in here, there's a few that are in the audience here that are saying that it's a good plan and that we should move forward. But we don't see the other four hundred. We see the ten or fifteen here that are, that, that are objecting to it. And that's, and that's the frustrating part. You know, we said, we, we encouraged and we supported and we, and we approved i- in essence, the downtown or Destination Rapid City. We even supported them not only by ordinances and, and resolutions and so forth, but we also gave them a hundred thousand dollars out of our budget to make these things. So he went out, so this group went out and said, we need to figure out what we want for the downtown parking. They worked hard over the past three months. They took a lot of testimony, they went and talked and talked and talked with these people and they came forward and he now brought forward approved plan that this group approved. Now, after all the talking and all the testimony and all these things, this is what they agreed to. Not, now, of course, not everybody did agree with that. But the majority of it, the, the, the majority of the people said, this is what we want. And then that's what they brought forward to us. And so if we're starting to change things, there's going to be a huge ripple effect in what John's been done, who John's doing or has done. Now, we got to remember, this, this document that we're proposing is not a static document. It's a dynamic document. We can change these things. If there's a, we, we put it on the street as is and we, and a year later, they go, geez, you know, we really made a mistake. We probably should have put, uh, meters on Main and St. Joe's. Well, that's great. It's going to be their decision. They're the ones that have the nickels in it. They're the ones that have the, the, the investments in the downtown, whether it be the business owners or the, or the, or the property owners. But let them come forward, let them make the decision. They've got the stakeholders, the true stakeholders that they need. The final point that I'm going to make is, is that this is the first time that John and his organization has come forward and saying, this is what we want to do. Now, we set up the, we said, we, we encouraged the development of this organization, we gave them money and are we going to say, you know, John, you know, you did a pretty good job, but we're going to change it on you? I think we're making a bad mistake if we sit here and say, we are going to put meters on all the streets. They've come forward with an idea, they came forward with a plan that said, this is what we want to do, please support it. And I for one am going to support their efforts. So I'm not going to, uh, I, I'm opposed to putting the meters on Main and St. Joe's and all the streets because that's not what that group wanted, that's not what those stakeholders wanted. Let the stakeholders later come back and say, this is what I want to do. So I'm encouraging my colleagues here, all of us, to recognize what John Brewer has done with the Destination Rapid City, with the work that he's done, with all the talking that he's done, with all the true stakeholders and let them and, and support what that organization and that group has done. I think if we, I think we're making a big mistake if we say, no, you, you almost got it right, but we're going to tweak it right here and make these changes here. Let's pass it the way he wanted it and if they want to make changes, then they can bring forward, then they can come forward later on. And hopefully when they get all the other organizations that they need, that they'll be able to streamline all that. So I'm not going to support the, the parking meters throughout the community. I think our main objective was to make the core downtown as user-friendly as we can. We can't, we can't compare Main Street and St. Joe's with, with Kansas City Street and other places. They don't have the presidents, they don't have all the walking that, that's the downtown core that we're talking about has. It's different. They've made that point, John Brewer and his group has come forward and they, they've made that point. It's different. Main and St. Joe is different than it is on Kansas City Street. So if John would have come said, we wanted parking meters, I'd say, absolutely, you got it. But he didn't. And I'm, and I'm hoping that we'll support him and his efforts. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, again, I say, I support the recommendations that are coming out of, um, to do the ordinance, the parking manager and the solutions committee. But I just want to clarify a couple of things that, um, we've talked about the downtown master plan that was done in nineteen ninety-one and we've used that as a reference point to build different logical conclusions for, to. And one of the principles, and I've heard it up here a couple of times, it says, the third principle of the parking is that those spaces that are most accessible and most convenient should command the highest rental fee. I, unless I'm wrong, I, I understand that to say that the core area, which is the most desired parking in downtown, should have a fee attached to it. That's what I understand that to mean. If I'm wrong, I hope someone will correct me. Just another thing, um, I, I disagree that this is John Brewer's group coming forward. This council appointed a parking task force, which has nothing to do with Destination Rapid City. This parking task force was supposed to do a couple of things. Review all of those comments from that September meeting, um, and then come back and make a recommendation to the council. That's separate and I understand all the different stakeholders and entities that are playing a part to create a vibrant downtown and I support that globally. But when we look at who's coming forward with this parking plan, this parking plan came forward based on other meetings that came forward and that committee, which is not Destination Rapid City, vetted that parking plan on behalf of the city and is coming forth with recommendations. Again, I support in, in big picture terms what we're trying to do because we do need a revenue stream to then generate more parking downtown and I'm on board with that. There's some tweaks along the way that need to be done and I'm comfortable with passing first reading tonight and working with everyone to get some of those things that I talked about into the plan. Meters on some areas, um, looking at, um, making sure that that money then goes to the parking area fund and then quickly talking about where are we going to bill ramps in this community? Because I think that that's ultimately tied to this plan. That if we can't show that we're building based on this revenue that's being generated, I think it's all for naught. My last comment would be that we can tweak the plan. This is no different than any other ordinance that we create as a city council. It's not a quick tweak, it's not some caveat that we could put in there to say, if we don't like it, then let's change it tomorrow. My understanding, since I've been on the council and maybe the city attorney's office can correct me if I'm wrong, is that when we change an ordinance, it then has to come back for rewrite of the ordinance and that has to go through two readings of the council again. So we can change it, I mean, just like we change any other ordinance, but there's a process in place to make changes to it. Again, I support in big picture terms what that committee's work has been and I think we do need to move forward with it tonight. But I will be working in the interim to make some, some changes along the way before second reading.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to, uh, Jason Green, our city attorney. Can you have a little bit of clarification as far as the ordinance and, and the discussion we've had tonight?
I, I think I can. The, the general proposition that is always true is that an ordinance enacted by the council can be amended by the council at a later date through a new ordinance. So if the council ultimately approves first and second reading and this ordinance becomes effective, six weeks from now, for example, the council could decide that we would like to make an amendment to it. You'd go through the same process. Also, at this point in time, while the council is discussing the ordinance, changes can be made through the amendment process that the council started earlier. So there's two ways to handle those proposed changes. Could be done now, could be done later.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hatcock.
Just a couple of things that were said. When I started on the revitalization task force for downtown, um, I wasn't working for Main and St. Joe, I was working for East Boulevard to West Boulevard, Omaha, um, to Quincy. I wasn't working to make sure just the core downtown was taken care of. My vision, and I think the vision of the people that have been on these committees is for the whole area. It wasn't to make sure Main and St. Joe was taken care of. I appreciate Main and St. Joe as much as I appreciate anybody that is in that area. My vision, and I would hope this council's vision, is to expand that downtown area even further to the east, to the west. And we already have expanded to the, uh, the north and the south as well. We are moving in these other directions and to bring it all into, again, a unified team plan so everybody is stakeholders in this and everybody is taken care of as stakeholders. There isn't a unified area of Main and St. Joe to take care of. The ramps are going to be made and those meters are going to put, be put there, um, and hopefully on Main and St. Joe too, so we can have ramps and take that area even further. And if everybody, long story short, if everybody puts together, um, this plan so it works for everyone from Main to St. Joe or, or East Boulevard to West Boulevard, Omaha to, Quincy, I apologize, I've had a headache today, so, long story short, um, there's a lot of stakeholders. This area is a great area and a great place to have a vision to expand and all the people in this area need to be taken care of. You've all put in a lot of time. There hasn't been just a certain area and we appreciate everybody that's been in this plan since they've started. I don't know when we need to start making amendments, if I can make them. Again, I, I do believe in my heart, Main and St. Joe are the core areas. Malcolm made a, a great statement, again, that was brought up by Bill Kestloff. The third principle of parking is that those spaces that are most accessible and most convenient should command the highest rental fee. I've went to Denver, I've went to New Orleans, I've went to different places and I've checked out all their downtowns, their core areas have meters. They are the highest metered or the highest amount of parking that you have to pay. I've talked to other council members and they have said the same thing. Our core area is a great area. It's going to be the highest generating, I think, as well. They're going to make that difference and we need their help and we're asking for their help. We're doing this because we want to get to that goal and that goal is to build parking ramps and have revenue. And if we can do that as a team, everybody, all the stakeholders, from east, west, north, south, will be taken care of. And it'd be great because we've been waiting to do this for twenty-five to thirty years. Right, Sefner? So I appreciate everybody that was, that came tonight and I think we've represented many people, not just a few in this room, and we appreciate y'all. Anyway, that would be my amendment for Main and St. Joe have parking meters.
Okay.
On our plan.
Okay. We have an amendment, do we have a second? Okay. I'm going to repeat, my understanding is the motion would be to amend the plan to designate that both Main and St. Joe and the side streets are also metered. Is that correct and is that all right with the secondor? Whoever the secondor was.
It was me.
Okay. Is that all right with the secondor? Okay. Was that all right with the secondor?
I noticed that on, um, Ninth Street, there is some four-hour parking.
Okay, I, Karen, I just, we, we need to stick to the motion, so I just want to clarify.
I'm just trying to clarify what the motion is.
I know, I know, but she, she made the motion, and the motion was to put meters on Main and St. Joe and all the side streets. Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh. We, we need to stick to that motion. We can come back and discuss other things, but as a secondor, you either agree or you disagree with the, the motion on the floor.
So, the motion on the floor doesn't include anything on site in Ninth Street, correct?
No, that is correct.
Okay, then I'm okay with the secondor.
Okay, thank you. And my apologies, Karen, I just, okay. Everyone clear on the motion? We have a motion to amend, which would place meters on Main and St. Joe in the cross streets. Okay? Everyone clear on that amendment? Let's, we're going to, yes?
Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh, or just Sixth and Seventh?
All the side streets. And Monica?
All the green lines are turning yellow.
That is correct. So, everywhere, let's do it this way. If you look at the map, anywhere where you see green in the core downtown area that would now become metered, which would be yellow. Okay? Everyone clear on the motion? Okay. Discussion on the amendment only, please. On the amendment only. Let's go to Lloyd Lacray, and there again, I'm, we're, we're going to deal with these issues one at a time. I'm sorry? What, Joel? Yes, I believe that was correct. Okay, two-hour meters. Now, there again, we're probably going to have a, a, a number of different amendments here, so we're going to hold this strictly to the amendments. If it passes, or if it fails, we'll vote on that, then we'll come back to the original motion, and we'll allow additional amendments. We'll work our way. Last thing I want to do is get two or three items or different discussion points out there. So, discussion on the amendment only, please. Uh, let's go to Alderman Lloyd Lacray.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just wanted to point out that, uh, we're getting stuck in Main and St. Joe, and, and from my understanding, these were metered at one time until the citizens come forward and say, "Hey, we needed to do something downtown to bring people down there." And that's when they took them away. And that's from my understanding of how that went. And I, I think we're, they're in the same boat now as they were back then, is trying to get people down there. And, and you get employees parked now. If you put meters down there, two dollars, two hours, they're going to come in there, they're going to continue to feed them, instead of having to walk two blocks to come to work at a coffee shop. I mean, that, that's what I see as the problem coming. We wanted, want them to come and go. We no longer have the big anchor stores downstairs, downtown to, to draw people in, and so now we're trying to revitalize it. And so, I'm not going to be in support of the motion on the floor out of respect for the people who changed it around in the first place. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, just procedurally, I, I have a question. So, regardless of what happens with the amendment, um, if this is the only amendment, we, and we pass first reading, this will then go amended to legal and finance, and other changes can be made at legal and finance until second reading, just like normal. I, I have a question for our council president, if I may, about the amendment.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to go to Jason, his finger up, but my understanding is, Alderman Chapman, you are correct. As we work our way through the amendment, uh, one at a time, we'll either vote the amendments up or down, and then the original motion will be amended, and then the amended motion will move forward to the next legal and finance, and that will be the original motion on the floor when it gets to legal and finance. Jason, does?
Essentially correct. I just want to clarify that when it gets to legal and finance, the only thing legal and finance can do is recommend further amendments. The ordinance won't actually be changed by the legal and finance committee. At this point, the ordinance is in the province of the council. Only the council can make those, make those changes.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. Alderman Chapman, you still have the floor, so if you'd like.
Just another procedural question. Then, what's the point of it going to legal and finance if we can't change anything?
Typically, it's, it's council procedure that any ordinance actually goes through two readings at the legal and finance and two readings at the city council. Uh, just so you know, that is a council procedure that is not in state statute. Uh, so that is a council procedure under state statute. Uh, the only thing that's actually required is reading at the city council level.
Mr. Mayor, my, my last question is, if, if we want to add, um, the parking manager and the long-term parking solutions, that's currently not in the ordinance, that, that would then have to come with another amendment?
That's the way we're going to treat it. And thank you, that's a very good point. What we'll do is we'll take one issue up at a time. You know, the amendment will either pass or fail, and then absolutely, you can bring forward another amendment, and we can amend it numerous times. But that is correct. Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
I'll just be brief. I seconded the motion. I thought this was a good, a good strategy that serves the community long-term. I think we're talking about something that puts in place a benefit to our community over the next 35 years.
Okay, thank you. The motion on the floor is the amendment, which would, uh, replace the two-hour non-metered in the core downtown area between Ninth and basically Fourth and Fifth, including the cross-sections of Seventh, Sixth, and part of Fifth Street. Everyone clear on the motion? And, uh, we'll go to Alderman Bill O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll be, I'll be much brief, much more brief this time. Uh, I certainly appreciate your comments, uh, Alderman Chapman, that, that, that we could take a look at it as a city council and council leadership. But my, my concern is, is that, that there was a committee that went out and talked to 400 people that said, "This is what we want. This is what we want to have." And I think we need to support that effort, and I think we need to support and, and, and respect what Destination Rapid City has done, as well as John Brewer. I know it's, I know there's, there's money on the table, uh, and there's, there's a few people that have questions of fairness and, and honesty and those kinds of things, but I think we need to support what, what that committee that we asked to do, to do. They're the ones that are, they're the ones that are true stakeholders. They're the ones that have the, have the investment in the downtown. We're sitting up here saying, and trying to second-guess those, all those 400 people that were, that, that John had the opportunity to talk with. I know it sounds like there's going to, it's, it's going to pass, but I certainly would, would caution all of us to think about what we're doing here. We, as a group of 10 people, listening to 10 or 15 people out here in the audience, that, that we don't see the 400 people that said, "This is what we want, and this is what we expect. John, we agreed to this. You go forward, make your presentation. This is the plan that we want to have." And I'm certain, and, and I respect that. I respect that more than, than the judgment and, and the, and, and the caring that the 10 of us have. So, I'm not going to support the meters. If they want to come back in a year from now, God love them, and I'll be the first one to, to drum the, the drum for them. But I'm not going to support the meters, because I'm going to support the efforts of, uh, Destination Rapid City and John Brewer.
Okay, thank you. Motion on the floor is the motion to amend. Any further discussion on the amendment motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief, but I just wanted to make sure that I'm in support of the downtown. There's no doubt. I'm in support of achieving the goal that the downtown revitalization, the people of downtown want to achieve. And that goal is to create long-term parking solutions. $290,000 left on the table, not metering Main and St. Joe. I think this is important numbers, if you understand, that there's $290,000 at stake here if we don't meter them. If we do meter them, there's an extra $290,000, $1,000 to build parking ramps. We have talked about the potentials of managing that after the fact, and, and letting the people have a say as they go along. But the $290,000, and, and some of the numbers that we showed here earlier, our bonding authority is probably, I would say about half of that six and a half percent, so you can see the payback period would be, how quick the payback period would be. If you change that six and a half percent number to a three and a quarter percent number, you can see with an extra $290,000 how fast they would pay back for these parking ramps. That is what's necessary. The parking ramps, I mentioned earlier, I'm sure there will be a good plan for those ahead, but to, to achieve that goal, which is the number-one goal, it's going to require this to happen, and it's going to require all the stakeholders to invest in this solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is the motion to amend. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Quaker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Costello?
Aye.
Hatcock?
Aye.
O'Kroy?
No.
Martinson?
Aye.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
O'Krepke?
No.
Chapman?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes eight to two, so we are back to the original motion as amended. Any additional discussion or action? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Two, two comments. Uh, first says I have a, a programming question for, for JJ, if you, if you wouldn't mind helping me out on this. The, the meters, as I understand it, have a 15-minute, uh, button, and the question that I have is, is, let's say there's four minutes left, and somebody else pulls out, I pull in. As I understand it, the way it's going forward now is I would have to wait that four minutes to run it down. I, I, I think that it should be, we should set this up so that, uh, if, if more than 15 minutes, pressing the button wouldn't reset it down to 15 minutes. But if it's less than 15 minutes, you should be able to push the button so it goes back up to 15. Can we, can we do that? And do I need a motion to make that happen?
No, actually, that was a technical question, Alderman Quaker, and I believe they have the question, because our impression was tech, uh, the technology did not allow us, but JJ may have the answer for us. Because I know that's a discussion we had, and, and that's the very question I asked to check into.
Yeah, currently with the, uh, the electronic meters.
JJ, is your mic on? No.
Is it on now? Okay. Uh, currently, currently the ordinance is, uh, in talking with Monica, the ordinance provides so that somebody, when there is four minutes left on a meter, if somebody comes up and pushes the button, it will reset to 15. Um, and we can program those meters whichever way we want to go. The manufacturer is very clear that, um, if you want it to wind all the way down before the 15 can be activated, it is a matter of programming. Uh, so if we have the 12-minute situation, and you come up and push it, and you want 15, we can have that in those meters.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the clarification. I think the only point, and, and I don't mean to, to, I, I think I know where you're headed, Alderman Quaker, and that is the fact that we want to allow that, but we also have to have something in the ordinance so people don't go up and repeatedly push it all the time. So, but if there's someone new, they have the ability to reset. I'll go to Alderman Quaker.
Well, and, and I think that's an important, uh, clarification, and what's also important is, if you have 45 minutes on the meter, some 12-year-old kid can't walk by and ruin your day, so, you know.
Correct, I.
You shouldn't be able to reset it down to 15 minutes if it's more than 15.
Right, I believe it's just a matter of programming, and the manufacturer will program and set that, that limit is where we request it to be set. So, if we want it, uh, to prohibit, if there's 16 minutes on there and you want to prohibit it from being reset at 15, uh, I believe we can do that through the programming of the meter.
Okay.
Is a motion required to, I need to structure a motion to make this happen?
I don't think so. Why don't we do the, let's work, we'll talk about this as we bring it back to legal and finance, and at that time, Alderman Quaker, if we do need to amend it, we'll, we'll do it that direction. Do you have a second item?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, the other item I have is, is I see down in real fine white print down at Dakota Middle School, it says Dakota Middle School Parking Tags. And, you know, I, I would like to draw your attention to that, and then also have you also take a look at the yellow lines near City Hall, uh, on, uh, Seventh, I'm sorry, on Sixth Street. What we've done with the earlier motion, by removing all of the two-hour non-metered parking, we have made the two-hour non-metered parking in City Hall's parking lot much more desirable than it was before. And there have been times where it's been very difficult to find a parking spot in City Hall's parking lot. I am wondering if it would be wise to the, on that yellow line right along City Hall, to simply allow city parking tags to park in that so that the mayor and other, other city vehicles that park there won't all of a sudden, nothing against mayor, but won't all of a sudden park in the city parking lot, and then there'll be that many, many less parking spaces.
And Alderman Quaker, that, you bring up a very good point. Uh, just a point of clarification. If you look at the two-hour un-metered in front of City Hall, that's actually enlarged versus what we currently have. And the reason we did that was because as we developed the parking lot across the street to the east on the corner of Fifth and Omaha Street, we moved a number of the city vehicles across there, and that freed up additional space. And Monica, do you know how many additional spaces we're going to have out front here? I know it's 30, 35, something like that. So, there will be additional parking, uh, for the public and so forth out in the lot out in front. That's why if you actually look at the green area in front of City Hall, that is expanded versus what it currently is.
So, if I, if you don't mind me asking you a question?
Sure, go ahead, please.
You don't, you don't think it's necessary to do a Dakota Middle School-type thing right along the side?
I, I don't think so. I think we're okay. Matter of fact, uh, we have an internal parking plan that we're talking about, and, uh, I think we have enough room for, uh, city employees to either park in the two-hour employee parking or across the street, or there is a few of the folks that actually are going to be in the parking ramp. Um, uh, we've, we've done extremely well as, as far as renting out, uh, the top level. I think those are pretty much sold out. There is some availability on the covered, especially in the far end where you have to go all the way around the hook. And so, that's what we'll be putting some of the city employees, but I think it's less than, is it a couple dozen at the most? I think so. I'll look to Jim Preston, but I think that's correct.
That's all I have.
Yep, very good. Thank you. Uh, let's see, let's go to, I'm going to go to, let's see, Ron Wyffenbach, they both spoke. So, I'm going to go back to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for, um, maybe JJ and Monica. Um, I know some of us received the article out of the USA Today, I think I forwarded to Monica today, but in there, they, they talk about smart parking meters catching on across the US, and there's a paragraph that says, "The meters, some of which also take coins, include solar-powered devices that can take credit cards, debit card meters that can be paid by cellphone, and meters that are linked to wireless networks that can be remotely controlled and alert officers to parking violations." I mean, I know that's a lot to throw into the mix at this point, but I'm just wondering, did we look at solar and, and the cost? I'm going to expand that just a little bit in light of, um, looking at the 2012 money that's designated for parking, and the idea came forward that we could pay for the meters initially, so there wouldn't be this need to bond for them. And we looked at that as being roughly $800,000 from that, 2.8 million, leaving $2 million in the parking fund. If there's a greater long-term benefit, would it make, would it make more sense to take more of that 2012 money and, and invest in the solar or the other technologies so that we give people who come to the downtown area even a greater flexibility to park? Just a question. I know it's a lot to throw out, but just a question.
And JJ is like, I'm, I'm going to answer a couple of those. Yeah, as far as credit cards, absolutely, we looked at that. That was, uh, technically a, a real headache because of the fact that in order to process credit cards, you typically have to have a way to transmit that information to make sure you get an authorization and back and so forth, and the technology isn't quite there. Uh, the stuff that's out there is also very expensive and problematic as far as how well it works, and so that was a real issue. And on top of that, uh, keep in mind, with that small of a transaction, there is a very hefty transaction fee when you're talking about two or three dollars at a time. Um, you know, uh, on a typical credit card, as far as a retailer, they'll pay anywhere from two to three percent. And if you're talking about something as far as transactions at a buck and a half to two bucks at a time, you're probably talking, probably losing anywhere from five to 10% of your revenue. Um, as far as the solar, I'm going to look at JJ, because I don't remember that discussion. JJ?
Thank you, sir. We, we did look at solar-powered meters. Uh, one of the problems with, uh, the meter companies that are out there right now is we are limited. We've, we've set ourselves with the parameters that we have right now on what type of meters and what functionality you want your meters to be able to do, uh, and one of those is the push-button and the parking carts. Uh, there are very limited companies out there that offer those technologies together. We could, uh, go out and buy, you know, tons and tons of coin-operated meters that are solar-powered, but they wouldn't give us the smart card reader, they wouldn't give us the push-button. So, uh, we did look at the solar-powered. Uh, the cost of the batteries to run these things are, are not, uh, i- it's not so great. That would be a, a great concern over time. Uh, we've had very good luck currently with the, uh, battery-powered, uh, meters that we currently have. They're, um, they're, they're very reliable. We don't spend a, a great deal of time and money replacing those batteries and those. So, it's, uh, the technology that we have right now is proving itself out on the street, and, uh, anything beyond that would probably be kind of, uh, a wishful thinking at this point.
Anything else? Very good. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got caught up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got caught up in that discussion and almost forgot what I was going to talk about. But earlier, I talked to Monica about the provision for not allowing people to plug the, plug the meters and come back out and plug the meters. And I wanted to make an amendment that said that we'd mark the tires so that people just don't sit there in the meters and, and feed them. So I moved that as amendment.
Okay, we have an amendment on the floor. Do we have a second? Okay, we have an amendment and a second. And just, Alderman Wythenbach, just for clarification, are we talking about the exact same area of where we just made the original amendment as far as the downtown core area?
I, I was thinking of the whole entire parking plan unless that's not, unless that's not realistic. Does that add too much? I guess I'll, I'll refer to JJ for that.
I will tell you, if we start marking tires throughout the entire core downtown area, we're going to probably have to double our, our enforcement staff because it's easy to drive by and look at a meter to see if it's expired, but it's very time-consuming to mark the tires. We do that in the core downtown area right now in Main and St. Joe. But as far as the rest of downtown, they can zip through that fairly quickly because they're not having to write down license plates, looking at, at chalk marks. And they can cover a heck of a lot more ground in, in those metered areas than they can in the core downtown. JJ, is that a fair statement?
The, the marking of tires does present a, a lot of issues as far as timing of routes and having staff to cover those routes to make sure that people aren't.
I would draw my motion.
Okay. Is that all right with the secondor?
Actually, Alderman Wythenbach had a very, very good idea. He, we just need to walk through this just a little bit more.
Okay.
And, and well, I'll wait till I have the floor then.
Okay, very good. Yeah, go ahead and turn your light on. I just want to make sure it's all right with the secondor because the motion belongs to the floor and not to the motion maker. So as long as I have agreement, both the motion maker and the secondor, we'll consider the motion withdrawn and then we'll go to further discussion and then you can bring it back up. Okay. Let's go to Ann. How about that? Alderman Bill O'Krepke, you're up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd, I'd like Alderman Wythenbach to reconsider his, his motion of pulling. You know, the, the whole idea here is, is if you can just keep stuffing the meter, what's to, what's to keep someone parking on Main and St. Joe? And they park for two hours and then at the end of two hours, they just stick them, they stick another two or a couple of, you know, a couple of quarters in there. They can spend all day parked in front of the store, their, their building, all day for like eight bucks a day, which is, which is a heck of a deal. And so that was the reason, that was my main reason why I didn't want to put, put meters in there because they can, that possibility does exist. So if we don't make some sort of, take some sort of a care on that, then we're setting ourselves up to fail. And, and so I'd encourage Alderman Wythenbach to, to reestablish that, or remake that motion and I'll second it. But, I mean, if we, if we don't eliminate the, or stop the opportunity for people to stuff the, the machines or the, the meters, they'll be parking in front of the stores all day and there's nothing we can do about it. So if he doesn't, I will. I'll turn it, I'll lead to, so that I'll make the motion that, that, that the tires get marked or however we want to do it so that they have to move their cars every two hours, however that needs to be said.
And do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Nobody wants to do that?
Motion dies for the lack of a second. Jason, do you have anything else? Okay. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I guess that's why we want them to stuff those meters. And if they want to stay there all day and put money in those meters, that's the goal to a certain extent because right now it's about the revenue and getting ramps. And if that's where we're going with this, and they, they are going to do that, they're doing that already. If they're sta, if they're, they're already and they are employees, they are doing that all day and they're getting their tires marked and just moving them anyway. This way, at least with the revenue that is being generated, there's a mission and a goal in the end. And they're actually, and employers in the long run are going to get employee parking and ramps for those people. So in the long run, you're getting that goal faster by plugging or stuffing those meters all day if that's their goal. Because they're doing it already. So you're not, you're not changing that. What you're doing is adding something or getting something out of it in the end for the downtown area, so.
Okay. Additional comments? Joel, did you have a point of clarification? Other than, I don't want you entering the discussion here, but if you have a point that needs to be made.
I would just make the point that the, the rates that were established were established to discourage that. If somebody were to park eight hours a day, five days a week, that would be a hundred and sixty dollars a month to park at a two-hour meter spot, which when you can rent, lease a spot for forty seems foolish, but.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's see here. Does anyone wish to speak before Alderman Ron Wythenbach speaks for a second time? If so, please turn on your light. If not, we go back to Alderman Ron Wythenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important to note that there, there was an important comment made. And the fact is, is if you, if you feed that meter and you work forty hours a week and, and five days a week, it's cheaper to, to, to put in your money in the meters than it is to actually get a, get a ramp spot, so. I had a question on, with, for Monica, whoever put this together. Basically, on Sixth and Seventh Street, there's in between Main and, and heading north, according to this map, there's, there's, on the, there's blue parking, there are four-hour parking. Then it goes to two-hour parking. Can someone explain to me what businesses are, why, why, why the differences? I guess that question would be for Monica.
Monica, go ahead.
Well, you're, oh, here it is. You're talking about the two-hour parking adjacent to City Hall here where it goes to two-hour or on Sixth Street.
Monica, can you put it up on the screen, please?
I got you. That's, that's the City Hall right there.
She'll, she'll put it up on the screen here for us, Ron.
Okay, on Sixth Street, we have two-hour parking adjacent to the CSAC building here, which is currently what we have now. Then it goes to four-hour parking, and then this would be two-hour, and then it would go back down to four-hour. Basically, the thought behind that was that with Roger Brooks and with other discussion, there was a discussion about a need for longer than two-hour parking in the downtown. If you want to go get your hair done, go to lunch, go do other things, that there was a need for longer than two-hour parking. And that's why we had the two-hour kind of right between Main and St. Joe and then four-hour. So if you wanted to park a block away. Now, are you talking about the stuff that's adjacent to here? Why is that two-hour?
Yeah, I just had, I was curious why it went from four-hour back to two-hour. And is it because we're the city, we can make two-hour?
I, I think the parking out there is now, is currently two-hour and that, so we've left that two-hour.
So we're a little bit different than the businesses that operate there then? So we're better than they are, basically. I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to nitpick this thing, but I'd, I'd like to make amendment to remove all the red parking on the, on the lines, sir, on the, on the streets, not, not, not the leased parking spots and, and change them to two-hour parking.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor. And that amendment would be to change all the ten-hour parking as what you see up on the screen to two-hours. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Alderman Wythenbach, you still have the floor? Was there anything else you'd?
Yeah, I have a question for, is it JJ? What, are the increments of two, four, and ten, is there a reason, is that like a, is it increments of two because of the enforcement issue?
The increments that were set up are not specific to an enforcement issue on the meters. It was just a matter of, those are the most recognizable and most used, two, four, and ten hours. The initial intent of the plan, obviously, was to get the long-term employee parking away from the core area. So therefore, we did designate that ten-hour parking. And then the four-hour parking was for those people with a, a, not as long-term stop.
I understand it, but these people in these businesses on these ten-hour parking, so they're going to have the downtown employees parking in their parking spots and they won't have any room for their employees. I just, I'm not sure what our reasoning is on that. And I'm hoping that my colleagues can think, think this through and, and, we need, we need to, we need to do something here and change, I mean, have ten-hour parking in front of, of people's businesses because they're not right downtown. They might as well come and park at my house. And I'll give them a ride downtown. I mean, I, I think if I'm owning a business on, well, that was evolved from this ten-hour parking that was right behind it or whatever, I would have a hard time running my business if it was full of downtown employees parking there because it's way cheaper to park there than it is to, to get a ramp. Way cheaper. I mean, I, I think we're, we're building, right off the bat, we're making a huge obstruction for the people that have businesses in this ten-hour parking areas. And I think we're doing a, a real injustice by not attacking that right off the bat today. So I'd like to make an amendment to change it to three-hour parking. Something, something different than ten that gives these people an opportunity to run their businesses. And I would challenge any of my colleagues to go over there and open up a business and not have a place for their employees to park when they don't have a parking problem right now. We're creating one for them.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion on the floor is the original with amendment, right?
Yes, the motion on the floor is the original motion as amended.
And I just wanted to clarify after listening to Malcolm, when it goes to legal and finance, in fact, do we have opportunity to change it then?
You can make a recommendation, you can make a recommendation to amend, but it has to be amended at the council level.
Okay, see.
So in theory, yes, you can, you can make a recommendation from legal and finance to recommend amendments, but the, the actual amendment process has to happen at the council level.
Okay, because I, I would like some information on the Third Street property with the no curb and gutter on there to see if, if that's even worthwhile doing. If we need to change that tonight or wait till legal and finance, I'd just like to know.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It appears to me that the, the real meat and potatoes of this motion has, of this issue has already come forward and we have something that is substantive and I think forwards the majority of the opinion of those who have been involved in the parking. And I would urge my colleagues that we would vote on this because I think we are at that point where we can do that. I certainly would be ready to vote.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think we still need to do something with the parking manager and the Long-Term Parking Solutions Committee. But I'd like to have some conversation amongst colleagues because I, I know Mr. Brewer said that, you know, he thinks, or the committee thought that some of those things could just be absorbed already into some of the functions that are going on within, by city staff. I don't know that. I'd like to hear, I guess I'd like to hear that, how that would work. Or are we truly talking about adding FTEs? I'm a little reluctant to make the amendment today before having conversations, maybe with the mayor and other council members in terms of how that really will work. But I think it's a good idea and it should be added at some point.
Just for point of clarification, I, I think what Mr. Brewer said was they're actually blended into different departments currently. The proposal, at least the, the conversations I've had, would be to take current staff and assign those responsibilities. There would be no additional FTEs. The conversation I believe that we've had is the fact that the parking manager would become Rich Sagan, who occurs, currently runs our RTA program, and that the parking enforcement employees would be under the police department. So, but.
Just a comment to that, Mayor. I, I don't doubt that that could happen and I, you know, absorbed by what's currently already going on by city staff. But I think that if you start giving people additional supervisory responsibility, additional responsibility as big as this parking plan could be, in my mind, we're talking about paying people more money, we're talking about more responsibility. So I think there's some discussion that surrounds that, in my mind.
Yeah, thank you. And there again, not to confuse the point, the discussion we had was typically the parking manager would be, in essence, dealing with the maintenance issues, not so much the enforcement side. The enforcement side would still play, stay under the PD. But with, as far as Mr. Sagan, he'd be the one that would basically contract for snow removal and, and other things and also maintenance within those. But he would not have the enforcement folks underneath him. So we didn't think there would be a whole lot more responsibility. But your point is well taken. Maybe we can probably, we can bring that up before second reading. Okay. Additional discussion, additional discussion. Anyone wish to speak before Alderman Wythenbach speaks for a second time? If not, let's go to Alderman Ron Wythenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure I'm ready to vote too. And, but I want to be clear that as we go through this process, this is the first reading. If we have some tweaks that we can do in between that we can still move forward with, is that?
Yep, absolutely.
That, that's, that's right then? Correct. Thank you.
Okay, additional discussion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to offer an amendment, but I'm going to ask the council to think about this between now and the next, and the next reading. And that is the parking along Kansas City Street. I, I, I believe that, you know, the, where the library is seeing more and more use. I think that the, the two-hour parking being double the cost of four-hour parking along Kansas City Street, I think we should take another look at that. Quincy, that's what I said. Got my streets mixed up, so. But anyway, what I meant, what I wanted, wanted to say is, is along Quincy Street near, near the library, I believe that we should take a, a hard look at, at doing four-hour, four-hour parking. We want our kids to turn into bookworms. We want parents to spend time in the library. And, you know, I think to ask people to pay a dollar an hour there or fifty cents an hour there is not a good idea. And really, to fit the, the pattern to the ten-hour parking that's further to the south, we should really have more of Quincy Street be four-hour parking. So I'm going to ask that, I may offer that at the next meeting, but I'm going to ask that my colleagues consider that between now and then.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm quite content with where this discussion has moved this evening. We've established the concept that downtown encompasses a large area with many businesses playing a role and that the core area must be metered. And what I kept in mind throughout this, and how my colleagues did, was that this was what the, what the parking task force came forward with, was a recommendation. And recommendations are designed to be tweaked. They're designed to be scrutinized. And if I could offer perhaps one bit of solace to the people who are currently with the, the ten-hour meters, is that from looking at the map, it seems that they're always within one half to one block of a, of a two-hour metered parking. So I, I fully expect that to be, be discussed further, but at least for now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is the motion as amended. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passed. So thank you, everyone. That does take us to the second item on the agenda. And Alderman Quaker, could you read that in, please?
Item two is to approve a resolution establishing the fees, locations, and duration of the meters to be installed in the city's parking zone pursuant to Section 10.44.020 of the municipal code. I move to continue this to the meeting where second reading will be held and to amend this to conform with the amendments that occurred on ordinance 5479. This is a resolution and not an ordinance, right? So.
So your motion is to take it to the next legal and finance?
Correct, but, but, but it includes to amend this to conform with what we just did on 5479. Because we need to amend the.
Okay, but we have, we have two issues on the floor. I think what we need to do is break this apart. We probably need to discuss the amendment first and then move it back to legal and finance. I'm going to go to Jason Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the amendment that was proposed obviously didn't amend specific sections of the ordinance. So we're going to have to do some work on that and we'll bring those forward. I think a motion to simply continue this item will be sufficient. We'll also bring the necessary amendments for the resolution at that time. And they can be recommended to the council by the committee.
Okay, is that all right with the motion maker?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to continue this to the next legal and finance committee. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Chapman, did you have any comments? Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is to continue to the next legal and finance. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
All right.
Opposed? Motion passes. Chair would look for motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes, we're adjourned. Thank you.